Okay, I'd like to call the May Work Session of the Board of Education to order. First item is the recognition of Lindsay Liggins, who is a East Carolina Community Action. Teresa Sawyer.
Good afternoon. Oh, and thank you for letting me do this. Now Lindsay, she has synchronized for softball. So we had to work around and get all the important stuff in. So I'm gonna give you a little background first. We did this last week at our NCATA 35th Annual Conference and our legislated luncheon. And we had Senator Mike Woodard, who was named our 2016 Legislature of the Year. And we had a surprise visit and Governor Cooper came as well. So it was, we were very surprised, but both of us felt very supportive of public education. And so that was good to know. So last year, the NCATA Board of Directors awarded our Community Action Hero Award to a young man who had spoken up for teacher assistants during the summer of 2015. It was such an amazing feeling to recognize Evan Johnson as our inaugural 2016 Community Action Hero Award recipient. And after careful thought and consideration, the NCATA Board of Directors voted to put in place criteria to make this an annual award. We decided that it wasn't enough to only recognize one student, so we decided to recognize two. Community Action Hero Award recipients, one from Western North Carolina and the other from Eastern North Carolina. So our Community Action Hero Award recipient from Eastern North Carolina could not be witnessed at that time. So but Lindsay Liggins, daughter of Jennifer Carey, is a senior at Currituck County High School. Lindsay enjoys working with younger children and helping people in need. She started a new student welcoming committee at school after seeing new students sitting alone in the cafeteria. She created a buddy system and a student orientation process for new students. Through this system, new students are helped around campus in any questions they may have answered. A committee was created with approximately 80 students that includes officers in each grade level. During the holidays, Lindsay also sponsored three students from Currituck County's Angel Tree. She found out each student's needs and wants from their parents and collected money and got it donated to cover all of their needs. So we're very proud to represent, recognize Lindsay as the Eastern North Carolina Community Action Hero Award. We also put together a bucket, lots of supplies to get her started off on her college journey. We pulled in all those from all the teacher assistants in our organization. We got together with the May Districts and we brought these to our first opening board meeting last year. And we had so many supplies that we had one for each Community Action Hero and we had two big buckets that we raffled off for our scholarship recipients that we give every year.
Lindsay would be very proud of this.
I just want to say that I taught Lindsay in fifth grade and she's had this big part for people since then and I couldn't be prouder if you were my own woman.
And on a personal note, whenever I read what she had done for new students, I moved around a lot as a child, just because that's just what happened. And it just touched me because having go to new schools, you have to meet new people and being on your own and doing it sometimes is not the easiest. So thank you for doing this for these young people.
Thank you all. Okay, the next item, revision to the 2016-17 Currituck County Schools' calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Dug, members of the Board. I thought we were finished with this as far as weather-related changes to the calendar. But as I texted one of my former colleagues, this week we had a sun day. You know, we didn't have too much rain, we didn't have too much ice or snow or anything. We just had wind, you know, coming from the wrong direction and ended up flooding out some of our streets. After we missed the day of school this week, we recalculated our hours for the year and we are right on the number of hours that we're supposed to have at a minimum from the state of North Carolina. With that being said and with the acknowledgement that anybody that would have driven through the county, at least down the main highway on Tuesday, would never have thought that there would have been a need to close schools on that day. And we don't know if that may happen again. And so we're recommending that tomorrow, which is supposed to be an early release day for teacher PLC time, that we turn that into a full student day and then it gives us a half a day worth of hours as a buffer in case some other unexpected event happens in the last four and a half to five weeks of school.
Any of the board members have any questions?
And we did an informal poll and we had the majority say that you could look at that. So this is the official notification.
Yeah, I could fish in my backyard, so I take that.
Okay, next item, interim budget resolution 2017-18.
Yes, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve an amount equal to the 2016-17 budget as an interim budget for 17-18 until state, local, and federal allotments are isized.
Do more members have questions on this? This is nothing that's unusual for us because they haven't, especially the state, never has a budget done on time.
We don't have any planned allotments actually for anybody this year.
So, and this will be in the consent agenda unless somebody...
So where's the...
There's a real problem.
We're gonna approve last year's budget. It's upon last year's...
No.
...plan or temporarily?
Last year's budget is already approved. We're just gonna approve, it's really, it's really just an interim budget. Once we get everything in, probably it'll be in October when I bring the budget to you for the 17-18 school year to approve. We're just sort of saying we're gonna roll over, assume that we're getting about what we had this year. And we've still got time, by the time we get our allotments in, we'll still have time to adjust as needed.
That's pretty much what I meant by saying we're gonna approve last year's budget. I mean, we already approved it for last year. I mean, we're gonna take the same views as last year temporarily and approve them for the upcoming budget. But I'm asking is, assuming nothing did change past that, are they for the exact same line of items or is it just groups of money?
It's the amount, right? It's about the overall amount.
Yeah, we will have planning meetings and allocation-type budget meetings between now and the beginning of school to figure out what the needs are and the type of expenditures that go up.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Other question? Okay, next item, review of policy 4230 on headlights.
If you are supposed to be there?
I have the...
Oh, a regulation. You'll see in front of you that you've got the current headlights policy for the school district. We've had some recommendations made by a couple of community members for the Board to review the screening processes and the notification processes. Specifically, there was... What was the part about multiples? Okay, number five, it says if two or more cases are found in the same classroom, the principal will inform the entire class maybe screened at that time. There's been a recommendation, because lights are what they are, that if anyone in a particular class is found, that there is a potential that somebody else in that class could come in contact or could have come in contact with that one person who has the headlights. And so the recommendation was to, you know, just take that down. If any cases are found in a class, then the class can, you know, the entire class can be checked to make sure that it's not a big problem in that classroom. And then it was the same recommendation for notifications. If anyone is found in a class, then that whole class gets a notification that headlights was found in that class instead of it being a multiple number. And those were recommendations that, you know, had come forward to us. And so we just said we'd bring that to the Board because the only people that can change policy are the board members. And so we just, we brought it here for discussion and then if you want to make an action item, you can put it on the Board Agenda.
So you're basically saying everything would remain the same except for number five, where we would go with one, any case found in the classroom, then everyone would be checked? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And the letter.
And the letter.
And a letter. I think that's a good idea.
And not just at the discretion of the principal and the nurse, but it will happen.
It will happen.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to ask that the part about the nets be considered as well?
Item four.
I'm sorry. Well, they're gonna re-enter the school.
That's item four.
Three.
Three.
Yes, three. Yes, ma'am. If the nets are there, then they can return to school if you've verified that treatment has been done.
I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
Well, if the treat, well, the way I understand it is if the treatment's been done, then perhaps should not be, but they still need to be removed.
They need to be removed prior to coming back to school.
Well, okay, I can, I'm sorry. This policy, and I was part of the development of this, and it was based on regional consultants, our regional nurse consultant and best practices, not just for, you know, the lights, but also for the nets. And it really was put in place in order to keep kids in school.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
One net could send somebody home for an entire day, whereas, you know, while we're monitoring and treating and understand that when nets are found, the nurse checks them when they come in and they're continually checking them. So like I said, that piece was put in as one best practice in the field and across, something Virginia has checked, that our policy is the same across the region. And again, in an effort to not kick kids out of school for something that truly is simply a nuisance.
Yeah, but I just know when my kids were in middle school and they played sports and they passed around the headgear and the batting helmets and it just went round and round. And if one person doesn't take the action needed, it just costs so much money, time, effort. So I feel like, you know, if you're saying one net or whatever it may be, but when you do the treatment and the nets, the nets should all be removed at that time. I think it needs to be taken care of immediately without the threat that it's just gonna continue to go from one student to the other. So I would like to see that, that changed.
I know that in the past, when some students have been found with nets, they would call the parent out and if it was just two or three nets, the parent would go, remove the nets and they're good to go. But certainly, I mean, and I see what Sandy's saying because I want to keep the kids in school too. And if the nets are, they've been treated, they're not going to pose a problem. But I'm certainly like for the nurse to continually check until all the nets are gone.
That is part of a process once they're identified as having either a case of lights or upon their return and there's a potential for nets to still be on the student. So they check, the nurse checks them before they're admitted back to class and then they check at least one other time in a close proximity. So if they've been treated and they come to school and there's like a couple of nets in their hair and, you know, and they remove them and they stay, she, the nurse might check two days later to see, are they still free? Or did something crop back up again or would, and then of course they go home again. So...
Is there any treatment in the classroom?
No, no treatment in the classroom.
No treatment for children, but there is extra cleaning and certain procedures that we do in the classroom for like fabric surfaces, stuffed animals and pre-k. There are things that we do. And there's, and the other piece that they've really gotten a lot better about is educating the parents. Not just saying, hey, your kid has lights, you have to come get them, but here's some things you can do, here's a handout that we can give you with instructions.
I think that's the biggie.
So they spend, so we do spend some time on that because...
Is there a treatment, because I know it's very costly, for those that need the cleaning solutions and things like that? Can they get those at the local health department free of charge?
There is a voucher that they can get from the health department to take to the pharmacy and get the treatment for their kid.
And Currituck Kids has stepped in to help families with the costs when it becomes continuous expense.
So basically you're saying though that, the way it reads now, it says periodic follow-up. So that could be, everybody has a different definition of that. And then within a two-week period, so you're just saying that one time during that two, that's basically what y'all have been doing, one time during this periodic?
One time when they come back, like the day they come back.
Okay.
And then another time in that...
In that two-week period.
Right. And now in, on that second check, obviously if something came up again...
Then we start over.
Yes. And there would be more frequent.
I know.
I want to have a serious policy on headlights because I don't want to keep going round and round and round and round and round like a gerbil. And so I know it's kind of like drugs, but you gotta start somewhere. So what I'm saying is, is that if they're only gonna check one time in two weeks, then maybe we need to address that language like you pointed out.
Yes.
And then secondly, I think that when the letter goes home to the whole class, that's the time to send every parent the literature in addition to the letter. I think all the literature needs to go home with the letter, so everybody's on the same page. I don't think, I think communication is key to eradicating things like this. And when we keep people out of the loop of communication and facts, doesn't have to say who it is, we need to just say what it is.
And that information's in there. It says information on prevention, detection, and treatment of the protected classes that are involved in the whole class screening. So if we've just been sending the letter, then we haven't been fulfilling that last sense of the policy, so we need to revise that.
I'm gonna speak to the letter that, in a recent case. Letter templates provided to the nurses and they have the ability to modify. And when we looked at the letter that was modified, it was modified. Again, it's a lot of information, so I understand officially that it's, you know, we don't want to overwhelm parents, but a lot of the educational material was removed from it. So Ms. Aronson and I are working to make sure that that doesn't happen.
I saw one of those letters and in fact, the date was removed from it. That was also a little concerning because then the parent gets it and it's booked back, they didn't get it that date and then over the previous week, the last week...
And those things are being addressed, Mr. Product?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on the readings we've got.
Okay. I just think we should be trying to get all the nets out before the children return. That's my feeling.
And I'll give you a little historical perspective on that. Back in the day, virtually every school district's policy was a no-nit policy. The AMA, American Medical Association, came out and they said that, you know, with the treatment and we'll call it a partial pull, you know, some of the nets, if the nets get far enough down the hair shaft, then the potential for the hatching, you know, basically disappears. And so they were saying that for students that have the nets on the tail end of the, you know, and it just didn't get all the way out, but it's far enough away from the roots that the egg doesn't get any nutrients out of the, out of the hair and the bloodstream anymore. And so then it ceases to grow and it's not an issue. And so they were saying that with that decreased chance of those nets hatching compared to the amount of days that the students were missing school, that they would, they would come back in and it would not be an issue where it was gonna create a repetitive infestation, you know, in the school. And so they said that the no-nit policies, you know, weren't as effective as people thought they needed to be. And so then folks went, you know, periodic checks, making sure that every time you checked, there were fewer and fewer nets in the student's hair. That's the way a lot of them went to match up with what the doctors were saying was best practice. And so school boards went with what the doctors were saying.
So typically, this is an elementary school problem.
That's where we've seen this.
So it has to be the heads and book bags.
They crop up, yeah, they crop up in any other places, right? We've had teachers that have actually gotten them in districts I've been in and some of the older kids too, for some of the examples Karen gave, you know, in the locker rooms and things like that, their, their close proximity and clothes and, you know, combs and things like that. And so it can happen in older students too.
Our historical data shows that it's most likely.
Yeah, the majority are at the elementary because their, their activities are more...
The heads and book bags.
Well, and, and...
Just have the heads in the playground.
And what, and what they do for activities too, there's a lot of closeness on the...
And the mats, mat.
Well, there's mats and what they do on the playground and some of the games they play, there's a lot of contact.
And I like to share.
So, yeah.
And, and that's part of it, you know, and how the teachers communicate with the students. And maybe not so much book bags, like coats and scarves and hats, yes. So, you know, giving space between, you know, every other hook instead of every hook so they're not rubbing together.
But there's not enough of those. I mean, I know with Shawburg, you might have 23 books, so, you know, every other that would be a problem, but I don't know.
Maybe because of the J or Y or Z. You know, sit in every other seat. You know, I even heard a teacher say, it's time to put your heads together, but remember, heads together isn't touching. You know, so people are aware and trying to help kids not, you know, share brushes and combs, put their head together and only wear your hat, you know, that kind of thing.
And just so you know, I feel like I'm an expert on lights, but combing the hair daily does not do it. You know, where it says here, the parent guardian will be advised to continue to comb hair daily in order to remove all nits. That, that comb, that, that doesn't do it. And I think it is about educating the public on, on the removal and the information that's being sent home. So we all need to be on the same page because if you don't remove them, you know, with, with your, your fingers and pull it down that shaft of the head, the hair follicle, it's not gonna get removed. Like that little comb they give you, that little black comb, that's not gonna do it. I don't know, I just would rather be on the side of, you know, if you're talking about one or two nets or something like that and the parent's called and they come out and they remove them, that's fine. I don't want the child to miss the time in the classroom, but if they come back and they've still got a head full of nets, then I feel like something has not been done and they need to go back home and, and do the treatment again.
I'm sensitive. Yeah, I would agree with that, a head full of nets.
Yeah.
But we need to have a...
I can, you're probably, because then that projects that nothing has really been done.
Nothing has been done.
Well, clearly, I'm just gonna say this. What we have been doing hasn't been enough because if we had, then all this wouldn't hold up. That'd be in the discussion. So that's why I'm trying to make sure that what we're doing is on the right path.
Mr. Product, I'll say that I think a lot of it bubbled up because of what you said. It was a failure to communicate effectively. And I think that when we finally got to a point where we could address what a parent thought had not happened and felt like it should have according to our policy, we were able to clarify a lot of those things. But I agree with you. Communication is, is the key to this.
That parent, by the way, at that particular school is not the only parent that has contacted me from other elementary schools in this county and expressed the very same things about this to me. I just want to share that with you. So it's not just an isolated incident at a school.
I've had one contact on it.
I've had several from two...
And what I can say, you know, again, I just have two definitely different time spans to compare, but the numbers that are being reported to me now on headlights are nowhere near the numbers that Currituck used to have a couple decades ago. And so the work that the nurses are doing and teachers and even working with parents, the numbers are way down from what they used to be. And so, you know, if there's some things we can do to this policy to try to get it down to not having to worry about it at all for anybody, that would be fantastic. So whatever the Board thinks those revisions need to be, just let us know and we'll revise the policy and the procedures.
Would you want us to add this to the agenda tonight and discuss and possibly take action?
If you want to, yeah, if you come to consensus, then we can...
If we're gonna know what we're gonna do. I mean, I could see if we change the wording on periodic and within the two-week period and have more than one, that's just open to whatever somebody decides. If you have it in black and white that...
They can definitely be more specific.
Not periodically, but every three days or whatever.
I like that.
Until they're gone, then...
I think that's, she's, she's right. We shouldn't leave it up to interpretation.
I think until no nets are found, they should be checked.
Okay.
I mean, I, that's just my fault.
I think those nets should be...
But I don't, I don't think that they should be sent home for just a handful.
Well, if they come in with strap 30 and they don't come back with all the strap gone, according to the doctor, we're gonna run them back in?
No, but I think, I think that's different. But what Jan is saying is if they come in and they go to the nurse's office and she finds two or three, at least give the parent the notification if she wants, she or he wants to come in and take care of that so they don't miss classroom time. I'm all for that. We just need to use some common sense as far as that's concerned. Don't send the kid home just because, you know, two or three nets. I don't want them back in the classroom, but give that parent the opportunity to either come get their child if they do not want to, you know, be in school to remove them and let them go back into the class. So that's what I would like to see done.
And realistically, if a child has been sent home and they're coming back in, the parent is bringing the child back in for the nurse to check.
That's right.
And so if the nurse says, I see three nets or, you know, here's a couple here or whatever, the parent is already there and they can just take care of it.
That's right, yeah, I like that.
But then when the nurse rechecks them within the two-week period, if they find nets, the parent's not necessarily there. That's my point.
Right.
They have to be called back.
If they check them when they came in and they remove them, like you said, and so they're totally net-free, then they check them in three days and there's nets again, then there's a problem and we need to...
Yeah.
Then we need to send them home, right?
Well, we need to call the parents and get them out there to be retreated with evidence.
Because something they're doing at home is not working, whether it's laundry and the linens on the bed or stuffed animals in the bed or whatever it may be, it's...
It's a job. It is a job.
If you're doing it the right way, if somebody's skipping, you know, corners and then just doing it halfway, that's different. But I mean, you're, you're doing 10 loads of laundry and going through all of that.
It used to be when, you know, we found family that, you know, the kids continually had headlights. and we turned it over to social service and I don't know if that's happening anymore.
I hate to do that.
Well, and we did have one situation where, you know, the parent needed some help. And so the school nurse actually went to the health department, got the voucher, went and picked up the medicine and had permission for the parent to treat the child at school.
Yeah, but what, they do all the washing, clothes and stuff?
At home.
Well, right, I mean, the parent had to do that part and they were educated on that part, like...
We have... I was checking every kid that's coming in, in my house.
Well, it was so, it was so bad at one time, Mark will verify this, when I was principal of Moia, I checked, we didn't have school nurses.
Yeah.
I checked every kid's head once a month.
Yeah.
And then when Mark went to Central, he checked every kid's head like every other week or something.
Yeah, yeah, well, when we went there, there was, there was significant, we started, so we did every other week, trained all the teacher assistants.
So there's nothing...
If I can make this justice, this is a regulation. This, this, this is actually a regulation that is attached to a policy that the board has in place already. Would this be a regulation essentially that you follow? We can adapt it, send it out for your approval that way. It doesn't have to go through a formal adoption process because it's a regulation.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have made notes on this.
Okay, thanks.
So have I. So we'll, we'll address items in three, four, and five.
That'll work sometime.
Yes.
Okay, next item, second reading in adoption of policies thirteen, twenty, thirty-five, sixty, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement and Forty-four Hundred Attendance. Sandy?
I presented this information to you last work session for first read. Since that time, I have not received any additional feedback from you or the public, so I'm open to what you...
Is it on the consent agenda for final adoption?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I, I like the part about not suspending them because they were absent. They didn't do that to me. I think they kept us in detention of things that might keep you at school, but not keep you away from school. However, I'm not real happy about, at least my interpretation last time, I'm still trying to read these and figure it out a little more clearly, but as I recall, I think we were saying that there wasn't a set number of days that you could be absent and then fail, like as long as you passed, you passed? Is that...
That's correct, Mr. Product.
And so I'm wondering, why don't we just let them all stay home and do it on their own?
Well, the point was if they're not there, if they're not going to pass.
Well, I think there needs to be some definition and not left open to interpretation, just like the last rule, I think, or revision. I just think, part of going through high school is a life experience. Learning things that aren't necessarily part of the course of study that happen when you go. Being timely, preparing yourself for adulthood. Facing consequences when you make bad choices like not showing up for school. If you deal with some of these issues before adulthood, maybe you'll be more likely to be on the correct path. That's my thought. I don't think rewarding somebody for not going to school is a way to get them to go to school.
But, and I respectfully disagree that. I don't see that this policy is rewarding anyone. It is putting a problem-solving process in effect when a student has missed five days and up to ten, and that's the section in there about the excessive attendance. And it's putting an action step into place so that we can monitor attendance and say, "We've got to find out what's going on here." So when Johnny has missed five days in a row, we're going to take action and find out. "Mrs. Rose, how come Johnny hasn't been to school for five days?" And we're going to find, "Well, he's had the flu and he's been..." "Okay, will you please send in the doctor's note when you're done?" When we have those conversations with parents and the student and the teachers to say, "What's going on?", it's going to prompt action to be able to problem-solve, whether it's an illness that we need to be aware of or whether it is some other reason that they're not coming to school. So having a number that you can't miss any, any set number of days or more than that set number of days doesn't really trigger any action. And, and it, it, there's compulsory attendance anyway. So, and it's just an arbitrary number, Mr. Product.
I like the part where they're going to look after and question why somebody's not at school for that period of time. Okay, I like that component. All right, and I like removing the two-day suspension for not being at school. The part I don't like is, I don't see anything in here that talks about unexcused absences. That I see excused, and I, I'm assuming that if we contact and we find out they had the flu or what have you. But I'm saying, where's the number of unexcused absences where you don't pass to the next grade? I, I'm missing something.
I don't, no, sir, you're not, because that, a, a number of unexcused absences, again, we took the approach that attendance is linked to achievement. And for students that in some cases are, again, we're taking classes online, they could be doing work, three days' work in one. And so how, how does that equate is the, is the issue?
Does Sydney have something?
Sydney has something to say.
So from being in the high school myself and actually struggling with my absences and seeing other people that are in the high school, I think that capping it makes it very difficult to like identify what the problem is because the student isn't worried about, "I'm missing my classes." The student is worried about, "I'm going to miss too many days, I'm going to have to do this again, and I'm already going through a hard time." So I think it's like a case-by-case kind of thing. So I don't, I mean, I don't know what we should do, but I think like as far as what the bill should, or procedure could be is to like make a process for different cases, to make it more individual instead of a cap.
And I respect that. I was not suggesting that because it was a cap, that there aren't exceptions to the rule. Waivers or what have you. I'm saying, but we got nothing, so we got nothing as a guideline. We got nothing. And so I'm not happy about that.
But that's, that's not true, because the, the beginning part starts out by that students are expected to be at school on time and be present at the scheduled starting time for each class. That's the expectation.
Okay, well, where's the part where if they don't?
And if they don't, then after five consecutive and a piumed ten, we're going to intervene to find out what's going on so that we can get the student back into class and resolve the issue.
Well, where do they miss forty and, and not sit? Then what do you want to do?
Well, at that point, we're going to have the problem-solving process where the social worker will probably be at the table, the parents will be at the table, and we're going to look at the academics to see what's happening. Because I think exactly what we're trying to do is to personalize, so we're going to look at each individual case separately, rather than say blanket across the board, "If you, you cannot miss more than seven days, and if you do, you're going to be retained or not get credit unless you make up the time sitting in some hall."
I see, I see the current policy as a deterrent for many opportunities for students. Not just sickness, but for instance, if a child wants to surface a page in the general assembly, that's five days right there.
Then they... That, that's an, that's already mentioned here.
That's excused, but it's still an absence. You know, it's still an absence. And then they have to go to the orthodontist and that's excused too. And Mr. Product, you do say, you talk about the waiver process, and I participated in that waiver process many times. That is, nine times out of ten, even if they missed fifteen days, twenty days, if they were passing, they made up their work.
It's an automatic.
It's an automatic, it, it is, it was just...
I was talking about unexcused absences. I wasn't talking about illness, I wasn't talking about doctor's appointments. I wasn't talking about all the things that would be excused. I was talking about when you have people that for whatever reason don't want to come to school. And a way to get them to understand, if you don't come to school and you abuse the system, then you're not going to pass. It's kind of like, if you don't go to work, you get fired. If you're late on your mortgage payment, you pay a penalty. It's things that you learn, the lessons of life, before you get into life, that you learn early on. And party this, and punctual this, and showing up at all, I think are life lessons, and I think it's important.
And we were just trying to put in natural consequences. We were trying to address it from a problem-solving standpoint and there being natural consequences if you're not there and not doing the work. So I, I'm open to suggestions. We'll take advisement. We'll pull it from the, the board agenda this evening, if that's your, your wish. If the entire board wants us to revisit this and come up with a set number of days that you must be in attendance, I, I'd work at the pleasure of the board.
And to be excused now, really, you just made that. So it's not necessarily that they were sick or that they were this, it's just a...
It was an, an exercise, the waiver process, and like you said, it was an exercise in just going through the motions where we felt like the policy that we presented to you has stronger actions being placed so that we can address those, whether they're excused or unexcused, they're still not there.
Right, and not getting material.
I understand that, but I was trying to differentiate between certain situations you can't control. Some other situations you can, okay? I had a problem with getting to school on time. I wasn't a perfect student. I didn't like doing my homework. Looking back, they did have things though for in-school detention, and they did punish you by not passing or having to go to summer school as a result of not passing all, of being at school for that many days that weren't excused. And if it wouldn't have been for things like that, quite honestly, I might not have won. I mean, so, I mean, there were fifty days.
And all of those things you said are certainly part of what could come out of the action that's taken. Discipline or action can be taken.
I don't see anything in there about that.
No, sir, because it's...
And that's my problem. I don't see anything in there that's going to tell anybody in bold print, "If you don't do this, this is likely to happen to you."
That's the team of professionals that recommend this, this, or this.
Well, because every situation is different.
Yeah.
Well, it used to be we required summer school, it only took one summer when the kids found out that we really missed.
I know, right?
And they started coming to school.
And you can do summer school, the, the piece is here, I was trying not to have too many voices, you know, coming, I was letting Sandy speak, but when, when you look at policies like this, you're, you're separating standards, i.e. learning, and grades, and behaviors. You know, that's, so when that team gets together, there's no way in the world that we can put in a policy, which is supposed to be a general umbrella policy, every possible thing that could come out as an action step or an outcome for a particular situation, since there's so many individualized situations of why kids are absent, whether it's excused or unexcused. And when the classes get to the rigor level and the expectation level that, that we're now studying with data analysis, when we get there, when you are absent that many days, it won't have to become an automatic failure. You're not going to be able to meet the test requirements at the end of the class and meet the standard proficiency because you weren't in class enough, you know, to get that done. Then the things like summer school because you didn't pass the class, retaking the class because you didn't pass the class, those are going to come up. And so, you know, whether or not we put too many safety nets in, whether or not our, our rigor level isn't, you know, to where it's supposed to be in some classes, maybe some students have missed too many days and they still were able to pass the class. But once we get it to that higher expectation level, they won't be able to pass if they're not there.
I see, I keep thinking about what Sydney's saying, and I can see that, because if they reach that ten-day, some of them may have the attitude of, "Why even?"
Well, I'm just, I'm just not in favor of failing a student who's able to pass the coursework because they missed one day more than what an unexcused absence is. I'm just not.
Right. Well, and, and that's where we are. And Karen, you know, had other, Ms. Edwards, sorry to be official on TV. You, you hit it on the nose. If the number is, let's just say ten, and the student has a rough start to his semester and he misses ten in the first three or four weeks, then what's going to happen? He knows he's failed that class.
So he's going to stop.
His effort for the rest of the semester isn't going to be there and possibly, it's going to be a disruption to the rest of the class. Now we have more discipline issues. You know, that's, but if this team gets together and says, "He missed ten days for these reasons, you either put consequences or supports in place to reverse that attendance pattern, get him back in the class, try to get him out working," and again, it might be discipline. You know, there might be the detentions, the ICE or whatever along with that, if that's what that team decides. But if it's a fantasy situation, no transportation, a parent has some issues, the kid's on his own, you know, type of thing, then you put some social and community supports in place to get, to support that kid in school.
Well, first of all, I want to be clear. Are we talking about somebody failing at ten days, okay? I was thinking more like thirty, twenty-five, thirty-five, somewhere in that range, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. But my thing is, if we're relying on just assuming that they're not going to pass because they missed, missed the magic number of unexcused absences, then somehow they're not going to be able to pass and go forward? I think we should have some guidelines, and I don't think this spells it out.
Twenty-five, thirty days, they're not going to pass because they...
Well, then why are we steering it in there then? Why, why don't we take...
Because it's just as arbitrary as seven.
Okay, I don't, I disagree.
The danger of putting twenty-five or thirty days is I know those kids, and they would miss twenty-one days if they didn't come in.
Exactly.
Because that's how many...
They can miss forty now.
I'm sorry, I was just...
They can miss fifty.
That's what we need, we need to hear that, you know.
Well, they miss forty in there.
We need to know, that's why...
It's like when you go to school.
Yeah, they know that they can...
When you go to school.
Dr. Dobbin, Mr. Bassnight with signal?
Oh. Is Mr. Bassnight?
Please, thank you. I really think you're talking about two separate things. One, if you've got a kid that can miss thirty-five, forty days in school and pass the class, his attendance isn't the issue. It's the instruction that's going on in the classroom that's the issue. Now, whether you want to incorporate that, if they're taking classes online at home, that, that's an entirely different issue. But the attendance issue you're talking about. Making a kid, punishing a kid that misses thirty-five days, who isn't motivated to be at school anyway, isn't going to motivate that kid to be at school. What it's going to do is reinforce that the kid is failing to the kid. And what we're charged to do every day as administrators is find out what it is that we need to do for that kid that's going to make the kid want, and there's the big word, want to come and get what we're selling. And, and that's, that's not going to happen in ISS, it ain't going to happen in summer school. That's punitive. We need to get to what it is that keep, that's keeping the kid from coming to school and make what we have more important to the kid. So it, it's, I, I really think you're talking about two totally different things. And, and that's what, I promise you, that's what we're doing every day.
And I appreciate that, and as not being a perfect student and having a lot of friends that have been through the penal system and have faced real, you know, disciplinary action as a result of what you do or don't do. I was talking about rewarding the students that came to school.
We do that on elementary.
With them, the amount of days that they're able, you know, to miss, and not rewarding the students that did, that did not adhere to the unexcused policy. That's what I was talking about.
People are saying is it, it's a case-by-case basis. You can't say all students...
That's what you said.
That they will know, they'll have a red flag that'll go up, and then they will investigate what the issues are, whether it be their home life or transportation or an illness or, you know, maybe they need tutoring or whatever it may be. We have to rely on their expertise to be able to do their job and say, you know, Johnny wasn't here because, you know, a, a death or illness, whatever the circumstances are. And that's hard for us, but I think we, in this case, I think we need to say, "Let's try it." If we see that it's not working a year from now, or it, we see more people dropping out, because I, I agree with Mr. Bassnight, the kids that have been out thirty-five or forty days and they pass that class, I, I don't see that happening. I don't see them passing that.
Well, if they do, that's not the class they needed to be in. They need to be taking something higher.
Well, in the state of North Carolina, we debated this with them and then they moved in this direction where you can take now an exit exam, essentially day one, and say, "I already know this, so I don't have to attend that class." In the past, that same student had sent through a class that they could already do all the stuff because the state said, "You're required to pass the course."
So, parents don't know that and lots of kids don't know that. So, we have to, that's where this comes in. I think it's, I like it.
I think it puts more responsibility on us to do our jobs, connect with parents and students to do what Mr. Bassnight is saying, to try to find out what keeps you coming and what's keeping you away.
What can we do to help?
Well, there's nothing wrong with trying and reevaluating and a year and see what's happening.
Whatever you ask.
That's what I'd like. If we could put that into place, that we reevaluate it a year from now and see what has happened.
Is attendance improving?
Yeah, see if it's improving or not. I'd like to do that.
That sounds like-
And we do, we do the, you know, the classic bunches, you know, two times a year and if this one isn't even in a revision and recommendation, we can just add it to the, you know, one of those revision sections and bring it back up again.
All right. Next item, second reading and adoption of policy seventy-five ten, leave policies, Superintendent Stefani.
Yeah, this policy is just on here for a second reading, more as a procedural format. At the last meeting, we asked for the leave policy to be able to go into effect for the last nine weeks of the school year and so we were given tentative approval and so the second reading tonight just, you know, kicks that into full approval. And this was just a lining when folks could use annual leave and/or personal days so that all classifications of staff were at the same place.
Item G, K-9 liability insurance, Superintendent Stefani.
Let me start this, Lori, and then you can start it.
Okay.
With our K-9 deputy now working for the school district, there's a need for liability insurance and so Lori was getting some quotes on what liability insurance would be. Once she gives those numbers, the board will have to decide whether or not that's really expensive or whether it's affordable. And the other option, we could get, excuse me, on the sheriff's department's K-9 liability insurance, but there would have to be a procedural activity where the school district donated Hunter to the sheriff's department. So, he would have to be part of the sheriff's department in order to make that happen. And we didn't get to the point until we got these insurance quotes on whether or not, if we didn't donate, if we could, you know, pay a partial premium, you know, of the sheriff's department policy and they would let Hunter underneath that policy. And so, we wanted to see what the full liability insurance was on our own before we got into any negotiations with the sheriff's department about insurance.
One thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
How much, four thousand?
One thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifteen fifteen annually.
I suspect any other quote's gonna be very similar because there's not very many people that actually provide this coverage.
You want to continue, Lori, or you want us to approve the K-9 liability insurance based on this quota?
Dr. To your thoughts, if you want me to talk to Sheriff Johnson and see without donating a dog to the sheriff's department if we could, you know, pay a third of that, since it would be one of three dogs underneath the policy that they have.
I'd like that.
Is that the same company that they have, their liability insurance, true?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, that would be the other thing.
And see what they pack.
Yeah, check them on that.
We'll check on their policy and see if it's cheaper and if not, then we'll also ask if, you know, if Hunter could be added to that and then, you know, if we share the cost of the premiums and see what they say.
And he's already been to both high schools and both middle schools?
More than once.
More than once.
Did we revisit that policy about going in there more than once?
I do have some information from the attorney. If the board would like the feedback on that. We were asking about whether it should say, "Once a month in the policy," as random or just as many random trips as possible. He said that based on things that have been challenged in courts and based on decisions currently in controlling cases, the once per month, you know, keeps the random, you know, label on it rather than, you know, some kind of targeted effort at the schools. And that's, you know, what he said there. Same thing with, all right, close by.
Random could probably be at our discretion.
He said, "Once per week if needed," instead of once a month.
Well, if we don't mention any, no, random would just be-
I think it just says random.
And the other thing was the prerequisite, it kind of mixed two things together, was the prerequisite that as people sign up for extracurricular activity and/or student clubs, part of their registration was their very first screening. He said that that does not meet the definition of random, you know, and the drug screening whatsoever. And so, he said, "Not recommended at all to do that as a prerequisite to join a club."
I'd like the wording to say random rather than-
Once per month.
Once per month, because if you go on May first, then-
They go, you're clear until you're in the room. Okay, we can revise it and then just take out the once per month and just say random.
All right. Next item, H, contracts for auto insurance and workers' compensation insurance. Lori?
Yes, sir. I believe you all have a one-page sheet of the quotes that we've received back. For workers' comp insurance, we got a quote from the North Carolina School Boards Trust for eighty-seven thousand one seventy-eight. And Suri Insurance, which is the carrier for EMC insurance, at fifty-four thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. And then Assured Partners, which is another company we bid out, that's the old Moore and Johnson company some of you may have heard of. They declined to submit a proposal. To give you something to ballpark against, this year our policy with the school boards trust is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but we've received a refund for the prior year and that was for fourteen thousand dollars, making the net cost this year be ninety-five thousand dollars. Most years we get a, you can either get a refund back on workers' comp or you can end up owing money, depending on how well you estimated your payroll when, it's always in April and May when they're requesting the figures. And sometimes we don't know how much the payroll's gonna be because we don't know, we still don't know what the, you know, the raises are gonna be.
Are you familiar with any districts that uses Suri insurance?
Yes, many use Suri insurance.
Because it's cheaper?
It's a very good reputation. I was surprised the bid was this different, but I-
Yeah, because just the workers' comp is thirty-three thousand cheaper.
Yeah. Would they also be giving you the refund type thing that-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They, all workers' comps since I've been in it operate that way.
But it's always a refund, not an adjustment in the other direction.
Sometimes it can go either way, depending on what happened. If you underestimate, we try to be as accurate as possible at this time of the year. We really don't know, you know, what salary's it gonna be next year.
But I'm, what I'm asking is, they're offering this thirty thousand dollar difference now.
Well, it's based on same numbers.
Mm-hmm, right. So, they're not gonna hit us at the end and say, "Oops."
We might have a difference, but it wouldn't be much. It'd be just a few thousand.
You give them the same number of payroll directions.
Everybody got the same information to bid on.
Have they ever bid on insurance for the school system prior, this company?
This is the first year we've bid it out since I got here.
Okay.
The school boards trust came out and met with us yesterday and they outlined that the Carthack schools has had a longstanding tradition in one insurance category or another for probably twenty to thirty years in some categories. And basically what they said is, they're not gonna have the lowest bid, but they're a stable provider in the state. And so, they said that if we wouldn't stay with them, there's a chance that you might be with Suri for the next two or three years. You might be with somebody else two or three years after that because providers are coming in and out of the market in North Carolina constantly. And when Lori and I talked, if the bids were comparable, then that stable provider, you know, might be, you know, a selling point, but when they're thirty-some thousand dollars different for an annual cost, we have to look at that, that as a good, we think.
Yeah, I agree.
It looks to me like almost thirty-eight thousand dollars between three policies if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Close to the board.
It's a big savings.
And so, it looks to me like we spent three years with them and we've paid for an entire year of the other one and savings.
And I've dealt with Suri Insurance before and they're very, a very good company to deal with. I have no reservation about what they provide. On the auto, everybody was given the same deadline. We had to extend our deadline because of a misunderstanding. And the School Boards Association actually sent an email today and I think you got a copy of it, Mr. Stefani, that they still don't have a quote ready for us. So, I put that on here. They said they would forward it when it was ready. But last year, our, this year, this current year, our auto insurance is twenty thousand dollars and we have a quote here for seventeen.
And they alluded to the point that they're, am I using the right word, the underwriter that they work with, is that the right term? That the underwriter, there is gonna be a change in the school boards association's quote. And so, as Lori said, for this current school year, it's twenty thousand. And so, typically when somebody said there's gonna be a change, ninety-nine and a half times out of a hundred, it's gonna go up.
What would the automobile policy cover? It's just our cars and-
And the maintenance vehicles, our fleet vehicles, the activity buses.
Our activity buses and then the fleet vehicles and the conference.
That seems low.
That's-
How many do we have in our fleet, Lori? How many do we have?
Probably about sixty, sixty vehicles. You know, it adds up when you think about the maintenance vehicles, the technology vehicles and then the fleet cars, the activity buses. It's a partial coverage on the yellow service trucks for transportation.
Okay, I have a question. Would that be based on whether we chose both of them, like not multiple? So, we can choose one with one?
And the garage liability insurance, there's really not much difference there. It covers our transportation workers in the garage and it also provides coverage for the auto shop at the high school. There's additional liability, like say they forgot to tighten the bolt on a vehicle when you're going down the road and it causes a wreck. It's just an additional coverage for that.
That seems low too. Does the same company give a quote for the K-9 liability?
They probably could. They, the problem is they sent about a four-page survey that we didn't really know how to answer the questions. So, I can certainly contact them if you want me to, we're gonna need some help.
We're studying them because they're kind of-
Because I don't know much about a drug dog.
They seem like looking at rates for the amount of coverage that we're, yeah.
Are you gonna make a formal recommendation for this next fiscal year, for change companies?
If the board is comfortable with these quotes, we would make a formal recommendation and Ms. Jones would revise tonight's agenda.
I don't see how we could.
Not really.
I want to.
Forty-five thousand, change is why not?
Nice job, Lori. Nice job.
Thank you.
Can I say the last person?
We're doing it.
Yes, so, we are talking about how, what else student board members can do for you guys. So, we were thinking and talking about this is tough. So, we came up with three things. The first being the most simple, maybe just being, if you're curious on a student perspective, just ask us, you know? You're always welcome to jump, we wanna jump in. We have opinions about everything that you're talking about, you know? It's just hard to jump in.
Sydney, just so people, if they didn't know, Sydney asked me in her second year, the beginning of this year at the board, if she was allowed to comment on topics and my answer was that in the board meeting room, there is a microphone in front of her and so it does have a little button on it so she could ask for permission for Dr. Dobny and give her opinion.
Yeah.
I think so, you know, back to you. You don't have to wait for a question. Go ahead and ask.
For other people too, maybe other people aren't as comfortable jumping in as I do. So, maybe just like inviting that kind of in, the conversation of it, yeah.
Well, maybe letting them know ahead of time.
That too, of course, yeah. Because I didn't know. I didn't know my first year. Our second idea was to measure student opinion, maybe by, so anywhere, like interviewing or polling, but on a topic of your choosing. So, if you're curious about something, give it to the board members and we'll take it to the schools and we'll find out for you. And I guess it could be our discretion on how. Like polling is okay, but it's impersonal. Maybe interviews with like random students would be good.
I have one. For example, like the attendance policy, like just seeing different points on that.
I'll talk to you about it. I'd like you to poll.
What do you think about polling students via their social media page?
I mean, it doesn't cover everyone exactly because not everyone has social media, but it would be a good source to do so.
Or would you rather do it anonymously, where people are more honest?
Well, unless we knew your student number, it would be-
It would be pretty anonymous over, the Google forums is really good for that.
Yeah.
That's what we did for the presentation that we did do. The only problem with that is there's like bulleted answers and people, when people write in, they joke. So, it's toss-up. But yeah, definitely encourage it because-
People need to do that too.
Can I interrupt real quick?
Obviously you are.
I mean, for a longer period of time. Just to speak, again, a point of procedure, I don't know if there are any wings or anything. When you said, "There's something I'd like you guys to poll," it really needs to be a board decision.
Yeah.
And so, if like all five of you have a different thing that you want, that topic, these guys could be running around all the time, you know, doing polling or survey or something. So, if somebody has an idea, bring it up in this format and at the rest of the board say, "Yeah, that's a good idea for a poll." Then the board releases them to survey something.
Do I need to discuss it with Dr. Dobny first?
That's up to Dr. Dobny. You mean, instead of just bringing it up here? Can she bring up her idea?
The big thing now is the Netflix series, Thirteen Reasons Why. I've heard controversial stance on both sides. I would like the students' perspective on if that series is helping or they feel it's detrimental to our youth.
Or if it's just neutral?
Neutral.
Our percentage. That's such a simple one too.
Really?
Yeah, we could totally do that. It's, I mean, it's like super easy to just get answers like that, you know?
And that's all over the educational editorial pages and alerts pages and editorial communications on email that counselors and administrators need to be on the lookout to see if it's really impacting students in a negative way.
Yeah.
But, so, any other things I'll talk before, tell you my idea?
Number three.
I'm done interrupting.
Number three. Number three is not exactly an idea on how we could help you, but more on like how we can learn more about this environment. So, we could take more of like, besides the school spotlight and of course the ideas that we bring to you guys, we could maybe visit schools with you. Maybe we could tag along and learn more about it. I learned a lot here in two years, a lot about policy, on how things work, the jurisdiction of this board. But I could learn more if I really went to the schools and saw the classrooms and the kids run around, you know?
Yeah, we did have a student board member go with us on a tour at one time.
Could they, could they go and visit just like we do when, you know, if they didn't have class?
I think it'd probably be better if they went with the board rather than if there's a student on the road.
Even, how about with one of the principals or the assistant principals that would take them around?
Principal take them around.
Yeah, if there was more than one, they could go with me too. I, you know, just some of my drive rounds to the county. I could do that.
We need extra car insurance.
But, so that's pretty much what we came up with. We were talking for a while, so.
Well, did you talk to Jacob and Tyler too? This is-
I talked to Jacob, yeah. He was the part about him and Tyler, I guess, conversed and then Jacob and I connected. That was the visiting schools and we kind of added on to it, branched out, so.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We'll definitely do these. Whitney, is this your last meeting?
One more.
One more? One more? Okay. Anyway, if there's nothing else, I consider the work session closed. Thank you.
I'd like to call the May 2017 meeting of the Board of Education order. First item invocation, Ms. Etheridge.
Good evening. As all of you know, this week was the Teacher Appreciation Week and we'd like to honor all our teachers in Currituck County schools. You once had a choice and you chose to teach and every day, it's our children you reach. You make the difference in the life of each child, those that are quiet and those that are wild. It's the way that you teach, you do it so well, they look up to you and think you're swell. You teach from your heart, that's plain to see, they think you're divine and we all agree. Please never forget and remember it's true, our children all need great teachers like you. We appreciate you and we value your time and if you should forget, please reread this rhyme. Thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you. Next, I'll call up Principal Michael Sasser, who will introduce the student who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd probably like to present Mr. Cameron Keenan, a fifth grader from Jarvisburg Elementary, to lead us in the pledge.
Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cameron.
School spotlight this month is on Jarvisburg Elementary and once again, I'll turn it over to Principal Michael Sasser. Doctor Sasser, excuse me.
I appreciate that. Good evening. Honored to be with you tonight and honored to do it so on Teacher Appreciation Week. So one thing I would like to do is all the teachers that are from my school and even in the audience, if you could come from my school, if you can come join me. And teachers in the audience, if you could stand up, please. My teachers, come join me. Sometimes I remind myself as a school leader, I need to put on my teacher hat and sometimes when I put on my teacher hat, I remember I have to put on my student hat because I'm here today because of teachers. Teachers that I had and thankful for these teachers that we have before us today. So if everybody, give everybody a round of applause. We couldn't do a spotlight if it wasn't for them. We've come together at Jarvisburg and we know the importance of selling our why we do what we do each and every day. We also understand the importance of our beliefs and that our beliefs drive the actions in our classroom each and every day. So we at Jarvisburg have come together around a common vision for what we believe. We believe in building relationships. We believe in working together collaboratively to create relevant, student-centered experiences. And these beliefs drive what we do. We love, we learn, we lead. We have come together to create a commercial to show how what we do makes a difference. So please sit back and enjoy.
(Music) We all make a difference at Jarvisburg. Our family-like community, we all learn. You say it takes a village to grow a child, that's why we love our kids the way we do.
Try to find their likes and their dislikes and connect that to their learning experiences and, and try to show them that there are so many things in their outside world that they can bring in to their learning experiences to make them real for them. And I think that makes a difference with them.
(Singing) Ahhh!
To get them to be more of a thinker, instead of someone always saying, here's the way to do it, do it. To get them to think on their own, because there's multiple different ways and I want them to see that there's different ways that you can come across solving a problem or making, creating a project.
(Singing) Ahhh!
I make a difference, I think, and I hope, every day by greeting them with a smile on their face, making sure they know I'm glad they're here, welcoming them, checking on them, going, I even go to their ballgames. I go to cheerleading competitions. I send them little personal notes. I message them on ClassDojo. I praise them and I hug and I smile a lot. And they know, I tell them I love them.
(Singing) We believe in them, the future they hold, and bettering our best each day. We aspire to learn, high achievements they earn, building relationships along the way. Ooh. (Singing) Yeah!
If you had a chance, please visit our website. You can watch that video again and maybe turn up the volume, if you will, and enjoy the tremendous music that we have from our very own Teacher of the Year, Ms. Brenda Cop. She truly embraced the words and the spirit of what we came together with and our beliefs and put them together in poetic harmony. So fantastic job, Ms. Cop. And again, she was our Teacher Assistant of the Year this year. And I also wanted to highlight Mr. Ken Middlemiss. He is one of our fourth grade teachers at Jarvisburg. He, behind the artistic poetry, is always the mastermind and vision of putting together the technical pieces and had a vision for how to bridge the teacher voices and the student voices together. So I wanted to thank him for putting that together. We understand as a school community, together collectively, that there's three populations we serve. We serve our parents, we serve our students, and we serve our teachers. And so I'd like to showcase some of the things that Jarvisburg's doing for those three populations. So first and foremost, if I could have our parent organization, JAGS, come up and speak to you a little bit about our relationship in the community.
My name is Gina Martin. I am the president of the Parent Teacher Organization at Jarvisburg Elementary School. We are called JAGS, which is an acronym for Jarvisburg Advocates for Guidance and Success. Our purpose is to promote, promote a close relationship between the home and the school so that parents, guardians, teachers, school staff, and school administrators can work together in education and enrichment of the students. We really feel that the communication between the parents and the teachers is where we were lacking previously. So this year, when we formed in October, we decided to have an advocacy committee. We have a chairman that goes around and meets with the teachers and explains both sides from the parents. We have also been able to, and this is our secretary, Elizabeth.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth McCollum and I'm the secretary of JAGS. As Gina was saying, we have been working in partnership with Jarvisburg Elementary School, with the parents, staff, and students, and Currituck County community to enhance and enrich the learning environment for the children, children and the families that we serve. So we would like to take the opportunity to invite you to one of our most exciting events of the year. It's going to be our Spring Flame coming up this Saturday. And that's going to bring together the community and our families for a fun and learning event. Inviting lots of vendors and some food as well, lots of fun for a family event. It's going to be from ten, ten to one this weekend, Saturday, on our school grounds. So please, everyone, come join us.
To add to the excitement, we're having our first ever raffle, which will be announcing the winners live on Facebook. We have really upped our social media this year by having our Facebook page and joining with the school with our Twitter account. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next population that we serve is our teachers and we're constantly looking for ways to grow them, to energize what they do in the classroom. So I'd like to introduce our assistant principal, Ms. Kelly Flora, and our instructional coach, Ms. Charlotte Ludoff.
In order to explain the newest professional development we began at Jarvisburg, the Learning Walk, I'm going to piggyback off Ms. Etheridge. I've created a poem for you tonight entitled "Ode to the Learning Walk." What exactly is a Learning Walk? I'm sure you're likely to ask. So please allow us to explain this educational task. It's a brief classroom visit that we've explored at our school and did you also know it was a research-based tool? The teachers use Learning Walks as opportunities for knowledge to show us strategies and ideas that we didn't learn in college. During our planning blocks into the classrooms, we go to observe fellow educators with something to show. Whole group, small group, and individual lessons, oh my. While observing in classrooms, you never know what may catch your eye. Then it's back to the conference room to discuss and reflect on innovative ideas that we can further inspect. We will take back to our rooms things we can do to enrich our curriculum and our children, too. So with that being said, with this poetic sample, Learning Walks provide innovation and ideas that are ample. To any teacher, no matter the grade, using a Learning Walk for improvement, you've got it made. They help us learn and they help us to grow. Learning Walks are the way to go. So I hope you understand exactly what a Learning Walk does. It allows us to get into the classroom and for fellow educators to observe their peers. It's directly connected to our beliefs of collaboration, relationships, relevancy, and being student-centered. So now, I'm going to let Ms. Ludoff continue her speech.
As Dr. Sasser said, I'm Charlotte Ludoff. I am the instructional coach for Jarvisburg Elementary Griggs and also Moayak. And my colleague, Kim Robertson, she handles the other three elementary schools. And both of us are very passionate about professional development in this district. And one of the things that we talked about as we were planning for this year was that we wanted to make sure that we didn't just give teachers information, but we actually made it real for them so that they could see themselves doing it in their own classrooms. One of the things that happens sometimes is we go to a great professional development, we might even go, you know, to an outside of the district training and we come back with all these ideas. But then it's really difficult for you to take all of those ideas and merge them into what your district is doing, what your building is doing, and most importantly, what your students need in your classroom. So when Michael and Kelly and I talked about the Learning Walk as an opportunity, we were really excited about the fact that this would be a way for teachers to see what's actually working in a real classroom. So every teacher, as you know, is going to take back their own information from training and they're going to make that work and put their own creative spin on it. So we really benefit from seeing other people in action with the new strategies. And I just, I think it's a great way to empower our teachers. It's a great way to support them, make them feel like we're giving them practical tools. And also, I think it's a great way to retain excellent teachers. Because if we are giving them kudos for something that they're good at in their classroom and we're giving them an opportunity to share their passion, then they're going to feel like they connect here and they belong. And hopefully, they're going to stay for a long time. So I'm really happy with the way the Learning Walks have gone so far and I think we've gotten great positive feedback from the teachers. So we're all looking forward to a few rounds of those in the future. Thank you for your time.
If you talk about doing these Learning Walks with other schools in years down the road?
We have. Currituck County High School are implementing these this year, so they've done those and would love to share the wealth, absolutely.
All right, so at this time, we would like to introduce Ken Middlemiss, who has not only served as a host for a Learning Walk, but also as an observer. And he's going to give us a brief testimony about these Learning Walks.
Well, I'm not going to lie, I had no idea that there was that much thought involved in a Learning Walk, so you guys are going to steal some of my thunder here. First, I had the opportunity to observe a Learning Walk. I went in and saw a twenty-year veteran teacher. As I was, I just want to tell a little anecdote from it, from the experience. I was sitting there and I, I watched the teacher go through a list of about five learning objectives in about ten seconds and I said, wow, I'm really watching a master at work here. Five seconds later, I said, oh my goodness, how am I ever going to do this? And then five seconds after that, I said, you know what, I'm watching it. I can do this. So just to recap, in about ten seconds, I was sold on the Learning Walks. From the other side of the table is, I got to have teachers come in and observe some of the things that I do in my classroom. Listen, as an only child, I'm not going to lie, it was nice to get a little bit of attention in the, in the building. But I think more importantly, it was nice to, and that's what I was getting at, I didn't, no idea how much thought was going into this, it was nice to feel like I was part of the team. If we are going to make the impossible possible, we have to collaborate, we have to work as a single unit. And I really, really felt like that after the, the teachers came in and observed me. And I appreciate, I appreciate the Learning Walks.
Thank you.
You sit there with the people that we work with, day in and day out, it's hard not to feel proud of the tremendous talent that we have in our building, so I appreciate that. And then lastly, and probably the greatest population, we serve our students. All the energy and efforts that we put in behind the scenes, the planning, the staying up late, thinking creatively, reflecting about ways to bring innovation to classroom, at the end of the day, it's all for them. It's to provide the most enriching experience, educationally, socially, behaviorally, that we can. We have tremendous students in Currituck County. I'm blessed to have worked with them, both at the high school and now at the elementary level. And I want to highlight and showcase some of those students here tonight. So I'm going to ask Ms. Keenan if she would come up and introduce those students so that we can celebrate that.
Hello. During the month of January, we participated in a project with the Pinewood Derby to help, as an extension project for, with Force Emotion, our unit during that time. And I have my top three winners for that and they are Bryson Harris, I was first place, second place was Emery Leatherwood, and third place was Alyssa Zouino. Very briefly, they're going to explain to you their thoughts on why they did so well during the Derby.
I think I won because I made my car very aerodynamic and like it kind of had a curved design and I placed my weights towards the back of the car, so the weight placement was higher, so it had, it would have more momentum going down the ramp. And more momentum means more speed, so.
Very good.
The reason why I kind of built my car a little aerodynamic is because if you do a little aerodynamic, you'll get a little faster speed. And so what I done, I spaced, kind of spaced out my weights, started at the back and went to the middle where it will have weight in the middle and the back where it won't go all the way in the back where it'll go fast, because I wanted to go like a steady pace. And...
Very good.
So I basically just did what they did.
I love it.
We serve an amazing community. We have amazing students, so thank you so much for the opportunity to allow me to spotlight the talents that we have. It was a pleasure, thank you.
Oh, wait, before you sit down, could you bring up your other teachers that weren't introduced and introduce them?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, please.
Beth and Leann and Kelsey and...
Ms. Haplin, Ms. Williams, please come on up.
I can't remember who else was up here that you didn't introduce.
I introduced Ms. Haplin. Ms. Haplin, come up again. Everybody come up again. For one big happy family. Ms. Eeze, one of our third grade teachers, formerly known as Ms. Haplin.
Ms. Leann Haplin, fifth grade. Ms. Beth Williams, fourth grade. Ms. Elizabeth Keenan, fifth grade.
Ms. Brandi Cop, our Teacher Assistant of the Year, wonderful in our self-contained classroom.
Thank you.
Dr. Dobbie, could they stay up for, stay up for a second?
Do you all stay up for a second here?
You will be given permission when it's time to sit down. Sorry. I just want to notify the board and the audience that I want to commend the staff and Dr. Sasser. If you recall, Dr. Sasser's only been in the building about three and a half months. And so for Dr. Sasser and the staff to go through that quick transition just in the second semester and have all these things going on inside of three and a half months, that's a truly amazing accomplishment. So congratulations to everybody and thank you for transitioning so positively. I appreciate the work that's going on at Jarvisburg. Congratulations.
He's done a great job.
He has.
Okay, Ms. Haplin, would you come up to the front there for a minute? One question. One question. Is he always this enthusiastic?
Every day. It's like he runs on Energizer batteries every day. We get emails at 7:00 AM on a Saturday.
We should not put Ann and Michael in the same room. He's been great in your school. He's been very positive in our school.
I can also answer that, even with the staff sitting here. One thing that we were monitoring is, Dr. Sasser is kind of like the Energizer Bunny, who just goes and goes and goes. And we had to make sure that we didn't get messages from Jarvisburg that he was wearing everybody out. So, you know, that was something we were monitoring, so it's nice to see all the smiles and that the staff has accepted his leadership style so well, and we're looking for great things.
And I have to share something, because I have some kids in my room, and Monday was Principal's Day, which we, you know, we didn't know, because it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And so we've been focused on ourselves. I had two kids, they're great kids, and they, today they said, Ms. Haplin, we've got to do something for Dr. Sasser, we have completely neglected him, and he's done so much. So your day's coming tomorrow, buddy.
Well, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I will say one thing, after listening to the kids talk about their Pinewood Derby racers, I don't think I knew what the word aerodynamic meant until I was in high school. They're what, fourth grade, fifth grade? Okay, speaking of Pinewood Derby, Pinewood Derby winner recognition, Sandy Reynolds and Elizabeth Keenan.
Excuse me, Dr. Domney, do you have to get the agenda approved first?
Oh, yeah.
Before we can recognize you?
Second.
Motion and second, approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Follow protocol.
So Ms. Keenan, I'm Sandra Reynolds, I'm one of the AIG consulting teachers in the county, and formerly a fifth grade teacher in my former life. And Mr. Stefanik asked me to come and talk about the Pinewood Derby. For those of you who don't know the history of it, fortunately, Terry Godfrey had enough faith in me when we first opened Shawboro that she was willing to let me take this leap and start doing the Derby race with our fifth grade Force of Motion unit. And for years, we weren't able to really get anybody else excited about it but us. We were able to do it collaboratively with the community, with Jeff Rhodes at the high school and his students cutting the cars out for us, with sheriff's deputies who would come in on their free time and help us put the cars together, because obviously, we're dealing with tools and things that we don't necessarily want to let fifth graders loose with. But we wanted it to be child-centered, and we wanted it to be their learning. So in lots of ways, we still wanted parents to be involved, but if anybody has ever been involved with Derby races, like my husband with the RIGA race, it sometimes takes on a life of its own, and my kids didn't always get their hands on their car as much as I would have liked them to, so we really tried to make sure that we focused on the kids' learning with this project. And Terry was great about giving us the license to try to do that. So they start out with a block like this, and we talk about lots of things, like aerodynamics and drag and how to reduce that, because these are totally driven by gravity and weight. There's nothing else on the car that's movable. Things have changed a lot in the eight years that we've been doing this with YouTube. So there's, there's a lot of information out there for them to process and they have access to, but again, we still try to make sure that they're going through the process of it. And I don't know if it was that way in your class, but the kids always wanted the answer from me. Just tell me what to do, Ms. Reynolds, just tell me what to make, how to make the car, just tell me the shape, just tell me where to put the weights, just tell me how much to put on it. And I would say, well, we'll talk about it after the race. I want you to do it, I want it to be your decision, what do you think, where do you think you should put it, have a reason why. So all of these pieces have come together. We were able to, three years ago, when I took the AIG position after Benita retired to suck Sandy Foster at Griggs, and she even hosted it last year. And then, over the summer, we really pushed with the support of Sandy, Kinsel, and several of the principals to try and get more people involved. And we had 300, 200, almost 80, 280 students from four of the elementary schools' races this year, and over 90 parents who came to the event. We were originally trying to do it at the Extension Center, so we wouldn't mess up anybody's PE schedule, and we quickly realized that that wasn't going to work size-wise, and Sandy facilitated us being able to talk to JP Knapp and Mr. Davenport. And Mr. Bassnight have been very eager about the project, and after they saw it, said that we could use the gym every year, and they would be more than happy to host it. So we not only had the high school help us, but you had volunteers, parent volunteers who helped with cutouts. Down at Moyac End, they had the Coast Guard, some Coast Guard people who helped, I think Moyac Methodist. We just really had a lot of people come together to try and make this possible for the, for the students. And then, they had everything from, some people had pennies on their cars as weights, some used washers, which is kind of where we started out with it. And then, you know, others have evolved to where they're using these adhesive weights that can be broken apart and adhered. And then, they have to assemble, they design their own car, they paint it theirselves, and you can tell by looking at it that, yes, the children paint it. A lot of times, the teachers would work with the art teacher or work out some other kind of time when they can work on that and put their cars together. Mr. Vic Ramsey and a staff of volunteers that he brought with him were very good about running the race. And she's going to show the, the sound isn't great on this, so if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But Mr. Ramsey just goes through and explains how the software works. It's totally, for those of you who came, it runs itself. He put all the students in, we get all that set up in advance. All the kids had a number on their car, they had a number on their badge. We had some of the high school volunteers who actually cut the cars out, who helped over at the tables, and even had like a medic, like mechanic section pits over on the side when some things came apart, and they were able to get them back together, which was a huge help, because we haven't had that in the past. If somebody's car came apart, oh, I'm sorry. But we had a group who was able to take it over there and quickly try to get it back together. So, and then it runs itself. It tells them up on the screen who's next, they go get their cars, they run them, everybody's very excited, it's very loud, which is why the sound's not great on here. But, and then I don't know if you want to talk about how you used it, any of the data or any of the conversation afterwards, but I always found that to be very, I always found it to be very helpful to talk about the data afterwards. We would do things like put the cars in order by finishing times and look at the designs, and look at the placement of the weights. We even had adults who raced at the end, and Ms. Coulson, I saw you somewhere. Ms. Coulson, who was a parent volunteer years ago, when we had her son, she even came back out and asked if she could race again this year and got her car back out. So it can be quite an exciting time for them, and the kids do learn a lot from it, and you can also graph the data, which, for anybody getting ready for the fifth grade, EOG, science EOG, those graphs are a little bit difficult to understand, but when you're working with real data, it makes a little bit more sense. So I don't know, do you have questions?
If you look up there in the table, see all those cars? That whole thing, every different color on that table was a different car, so that's how many students were participating, it was pretty, pretty amazing. And the finish line, computerized finish line, so there's no arguing about who won, who lost, I mean, it's all, it's all computerized, pretty high-tech operation.
And this was a handmade track that is very old and has kind of been maintained and updated. They even redesigned some of the end to, to be more gentle on the car, so it's kind of been an evolving process. But I think it's a great learning opportunity. Even on my way over here, Ms. Cooper stopped me and said, Caitlin still has her car from fifth grade, and she's graduated. So I think it's a valuable learning opportunity, and as you heard the children talk about it, they're learning about those Force of Motion vocabulary, what it actually means, you know, the placement of the weights and how important it is. And I think it's something that they take with them long past the test, but do you have any questions for me about it?
How did, how did your car do in the staff racing?
Coulson got me this year. Normally, mine wins every year, Ms. Coulson, she got me this year. She didn't start with a ready with a wood, though, she went to Michael and has her own, she has her own drag race design. She does, yes, she does. So do you have any questions about the race? We're hoping to be able to do it again, we're hoping that you will do it again. It took me a while to convince you, you were willing to try it this year, and then she wound up with all three of the top winners from her class.
Of the top six.
Right. But the top two from the whole thing.
She got higher. No, I'm not bragging at all. We were astonished, because I thought going in there that all, everybody else's cars, because they have done it more years than I have, I thought their cars were going to look like, you know, top-notch, and I was going to come in and everybody would know who was in Keenan's class, because their cars just looked different. And sure enough, everybody's looked the same, they all had the stat washers.
These kids made their cars.
Everybody made their cars, and teachers did not have anything more than giving them the front load, and they did it all on their own.
So Jarvisburg had first, second, and third in the whole county?
Yep.
Very good.
Not a bribe.
Did you see in your car win?
I'm sorry?
Did it just say your car won?
Not all the teachers participated. Hopefully, next year, we'll.
I was just wondering if the one that beat you, ma'am, since you always win, did their car pass inspection?
You can test my car, mine's.
I meant, I meant your competitor, the one that beat you.
Yeah, we, we weighed it, and it was not over five ounces. But that's another thing, too.
They have to pass inspection.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, we talk about it, after they've been weighed, they have to stay over there, and several of them actually were overweight, and we had to take the kid over and say, what are we taking off? And so they have to meet those qualifications before they can race.
Now, Mr. Stefanik and I both went this year. It's amazing how excited the kids get.
Ms. Haplin and I, too, were very excited.
And they get to race, and it's great, because the way Mr. Ramsey sets it up, they go, you know, three times, everybody gets to race multiple times, so it's not a one and done if it wasn't that great. That, and then they get to talk about the average speeds and so forth, so. And then afterwards, we would talk about, well, what would be the difference if there wasn't a maximum weight limit? What would be the difference if the track was made out of a different material? What would be the difference if the incline was less or more? And we talk about those variables, and how would that affect the race results?
Great. Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Keenan, thank you very much. Okay, next item, recognition of the all-district band, orchestra, and jazz students. Lee Burgess, director of bands.
So like you said, my name is Lee Burgess, current band director at Curritah County High School. I have with me today the all-district band students, the all, the East Region Orchestra students, and the all-district jazz student, and also our qualifying all-state band student, as well as the symphonic band members, or partial of the symphonic band from this year. So all the band students could please join me up here, that'd be great. So this year, this semester in particular, we participated in about four different, different competitions, where the students themselves went forward for the state and for the region, and they prepared music on their own, they, with lessons from me and lessons from other community members. And each year, guys come all the way over. So, so the first one that we went to was all-district band. This year, we had a record high of 22 students audition for it. There seems to be a growing, a growing need amongst the band students to go out and test themselves, not only what they find in the community against themselves and against each other, but against others in the, in the greater banding community. So this is every, this, they went up against every student, every band student that is east of Greenville, North Carolina, so everything east of I-95, from there all the way to the coast. So that's about 100 high schools or so. Of those 100 high schools, we had four students who were recognized and went on to perform in this year's all-district band, and that were, they were Thomas Dix on trombone, Connor Tomlinson on bass clarinet, Lily East on trumpet, and Noah Justice on string bass. Tom Dix and Connor Tomlinson are both seniors, so they'll be graduating and leaving me at the end of this year, unfortunately. And Lily East and Noah Justice are actually just starting out their time with me, and they are both ninth graders. So we were very excited to see that the talent is still making its way through the band. Next, we had our East Region Orchestra students. These students went up against every high schooler within everything east of Raleigh. So we widened the broad, our scope of high schools that were being competed against. So that was about 200 or so high schools. These students went on to perform and to rehearse under the direction of Dr. Bryant, who is the wind ensemble conductor for Duke University. These students did three days of intensive work at this governor's school for the science and math, and they went, and they just played a phenomenal concert at the end of that week. Those six students were Noel Mills on trumpet, Colton Baker on trombone, Sienna Setzer on percussion, Noah Justice on string bass, Connor Tomlinson on clarinet, and Parker Justice on piano. And then our last grouping of honored band students were, this student went on to do jazz. So he went out, and he learned a set, a setlist for the audition, and he needed to do everything from blues scales, blues patterns, learning improv and honing his skills with improv, and as well as learning a required piece for jazz. They went, he went to UNC Wilmington, and he performed with the A-Band, so it's the highest level band that you can play in with jazz this, that weekend, and that was also against all the students, all band students from east of the I-95. And that was Thomas Dix on trombone. Now, the rest of the students, they represent a very small portion of the symphonic band. The reason that the rest couldn't join is because they all had other obligations, and like we know with our band students, that they're very involved in their community and everything else that they do at the high school. They aren't, they aren't just band students, they're athletes, they're theater kids, they're chorus kids, they are art kids. They do anything that we have to offer at the high school, they do it, and they do it to the best of their ability. And that really proves itself with our honor students, as well as the symphonic band. This year, we went to the music performance adjudication, which is a state-level adjudication. They go before, we prepare three pieces of music for a five-week concert cycle, and then we go on to perform it at, on Havelock, North Carolina, at Havelock High School on their stage, and we're adjudicated by a panel of judges from either across the state and across the nation. This year at, this year at NPA, we performed grade-five literature that has not been performed at the high school in quite a few years, usually it's grade-three, but I decided to bump them up a few levels and see what they could do. And they proved me, they proved me right. They got the highest level possible, which was a superior or a one, and they, they did it, they got it all the way through. And we went into our sight reading. Sight reading is when students are handed a piece of music that they've never seen before, and they're expected to perform it to some level of competency. They went in and they proved that they are more than competent on their instruments and more than musically literate, they are very, they're musicians, they are musicals. So they went in and they got a straight one. That is the highest possible rating you can get for sight reading as well. So those students, those students are here with me and those who are still out in the community. I'm very proud of them for what they've done, and I could not have asked for a better group of symphonic band members, so you deserve a hand. I brought a recording of one of our pieces from that, from that concert cycle, and actually from them performing it that night. This is a piece called Kentucky Pride March, it was their opening march for the concert cycle. I'm going to have to take your.
One job, Tom.
One job, Tom.
So that you understand just the scope of what it means to get a superior. Of the hundred bands, a hundred or so bands that competed over the weekend or over that three day period, only 20, uh, superiors were actually handed out. The rest were given to about the average, uh, which is the level three. So they are more than an average and they're more than an excellent band, they are a superior band and they are one of 20 superior bands. Uh, the next concert that you'll be able to hear these, these kids again next Monday, uh, May 8th at CCHS at seven o'clock, uh, they will be playing, this band will be playing, uh, grade six literature, so I bumped it up one more level, I decided to go out with a bang for this year. Uh, and it's, it's a big one and it's, it's pretty literally a bang.
Not a literal bang.
It gets close. So, uh, I've decided that this was, are gonna be kind of a world tour concert. So the symphonic band itself is only playing, uh, three pieces like every other ensemble. Uh, and those three pieces are, come from Ireland, uh, is, they're a Spanish march and they, we wrap up the night with an African, uh, an African spiritual, uh, and ritual. So I hope you can join us then so you can hear them in action for that night. Uh, before we go, I'd like for all of you to introduce yourselves, just say your name and what grade you are, starting down here.
I'm Zach.
I'm Noah and I'm grade 11 and I play timpani.
Last names to you.
Last name.
Noah Justice, I'm a freshman and I play string bass.
My name's Parker Justice, I'm in 12th grade and I play piano.
And before we go on, uh, Noah Justice, uh, tomorrow will be going with me to Greensboro, North Carolina to participate in this year's all state band. He was the only single, uh, the only string bass player for the 910 ensemble to be chosen for this year.
I'm Lily East, I'm a freshman and I play trumpet.
I'm Grant Williams, I'm a junior and I play trumpet and horn.
I am Connor Tomlinson, I'm a senior, I play clarinet, bass clarinet, tenor, sax, and bassoon.
I'm Mackenzie Short and I play the alto sax, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Colton Baker, I'm a junior and I play trombone and baritone.
I'm Tom Dix, I am a senior and I play trumpet.
I am Joseph Byron Coulson III, I'm a junior, I play trumpet and I am the son of that woman over there in the concert shirt, the driver of the bare mobile that beat one that, uh, lever. All right, I had to pull that out.
I'm Kalani Kante and I'm a freshman and I play the flute.
I'm Caleb Price, I'm a sophomore, I play clarinet.
I'm Noel Mills, I'm a senior, I play tuba, trumpet, and percussion.
I'm Sienna Setzer, I'm a 12th grade and I play percussion.
And any instruments that they've listed off saying they play multiple instruments, that means that in my ensembles, they don't play one instrument, they play something else as well on another ensemble.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank all of you for what you do. And Mr. Burgess, I'd like to thank you for everything you do for our students, you know, congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Dobney, I had, I had promised, uh, Mr. Burgess that I would, uh, dust off my trumpet and, uh, and join the band, um, uh, for rehearsal, um, running out of weeks here and, uh, it's, it's reports like this and performance scores like this that have me a little bit intimidated. So I'm, I'm afraid to bring my horn out and go because it's gonna, they won't get a one if I'm sitting in there, uh, after, after all this time not playing, but, uh, I'm gonna give it a shot before the end of the year.
Yeah, we're starting our new concert cycle, uh, May night.
Well, that's what I saw, I saw the concert and I go like, well, maybe I'll come out with some new music and I'll stop in and if they're sight reading, I might have a chance to keep up for a little bit.
Great, once again, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Burgess and band members, simply fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, student board member reports, Sydney, Jenna, Jacob, and Tyler.
Good evening. So before I read off the reports, whoa, the band, whoa. So we never played above a three when I was in the ensemble with other directors, but Mr. Burgess has really pushed them. Like I mean, he pushes them in class, he's like, we practice and it's not an option, like you know you have to, or you're not gonna keep up in his ensemble, so, yeah, good job, that's awesome. Okay, so I'm gonna be covering Central, Curritah Kai, and Curritah Middle. Uh, from Central Elementary, May is shaping up to be one of the busiest months of the year at Central. We want to extend, congratulations to our first and second grade students on their performance of hats last night. Way to go guys and thank you, Mr. Pugh, for your hard work. We're looking forward to the leader of character assembly on May 18th at 9:30 a.m. We have several students that will be competing in our area's Special Olympics next week, we can't wait to see what our Olympiads can do. Our testing dates for the EOG have been set, science fifth grade only is May 25th, ELA, I guess it's English language, third to fifth grades are, is May 31st, and math, third to fifth grades is June 1st. Make sure your students are on time on testing days. Um, from Curritah County High, the, excuse me, the nights are wrapping up another successful school year. AP exams are taking place this week and next. Uh, interim reports go home with students this week, May 1 through 5th. This Saturday, May 6th, the SAT will be administered at CCHS. Um, the spring band concert is next Monday, May 8th at 7:00 p.m., I'm going with that, you're sure. Um, the spring chorus concert is May 16th at 7:00 p.m. Uh, May 18th is underclassman awards night at 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday, May 20th, the Science Club is sponsoring Walk Support Glow as the suicide prevention awareness walk, come out and support the cause. And lastly, senior recognition night will be held at 7:00 p.m. on May 25th. Um, from Curritah County Middle School, spring sports are in full swing for the Raiders. Our conference track meet will take place at Pasco Tank on May 9th. Baseball and softball have their tournaments next week with home games on Monday. May 11th is the spring band concert and begins at 6:30. The eighth graders are looking forward to their spring dance on May 12th and the chorus musical is on May 18th and 19th at 7:00 p.m. End of year testing begins May 25th and culminates with our evening of academic excellence on June, June 6th at 6:30 p.m. All right, so that's it for CCMS, CCHS, and Central, on to Jenna.
Good evening, I will be covering Knott's Island Elementary and Greggs Elementary this evening. So from Knott's Island, today our kindergartners and first graders had a lot of fun on their first field trip. On May 11th, the fifth graders are taking a trip to Torbayak Middle. On May 13th, don't miss the PTA donut fundraiser pickup from 8 to 9 a.m. The book fair will be at Knott's Island Elementary from May 15th through the 19th. Tickets are now on sale for the annual barbecue dinner. Please pick up your Southland barbecue on May 19th. From Greggs Elementary, May is a busy month for Greggs. The book fair took place over this week and is being extended to Monday, May 8th until 11:30. On May 8th, students will be putting on their wax museum. Kindergarten orientation is May 9th at 9:30 a.m. On May 10th at 6:30 p.m. is the first and second grade musical. Lastly, students are anticipating field day on May 19th. And with that, I turn it over to Jacob.
Good evening, everyone, I'll be covering JP-NAP Early College, Shawboro Elementary, and Jarvisburg Elementary. The Spartans are preparing to wrap up the school year this month. It definitely flew by and recently on April 29th, we had our JP-NAP Junior/Senior Prom, which was a huge success. It was amazing and I'd just like to give a special shout out to, uh, Ms. Christina Bowyer. She has worked on prom for the past several years and she is just, every year she puts so much time, effort, and she just pours her heart into it and she does an amazing, outstanding job every year and she just blows out all the expectations. So thank you very much to Ms. Bowyer. COA exams are taking place throughout this week. The baccalaureate service will be held Sunday, May 7th at 6:00 p.m. in the JP-NAP Media Center. Next week, we will celebrate our incredible teachers during, uh, the JP-NAP Teacher Appreciation Week, we decided to do it separately from everybody else. Uh, the COA graduation ceremony will be held Wednesday, May 10th at the COA Elizabeth City Campus. Senior recognition night will be Tuesday, May 16th at 6:00 p.m. in the JP-NAP Gym. And the JP-NAP Underclassman Exams will be taking place in less than two weeks, uh, from May 15th to May 18th. And lastly, for JP-NAP, the Early Colleges Class of 2017 will be graduating on May 19th at 7:00 p.m. at the Performing Arts Center in College of the Albemarle's Elizabeth City Campus. For Shawboro Elementary, I'm sorry, excuse me. Uh, April was a great month, this week they're celebrating their teacher appreciation. The students and teachers are excited for field day on Friday, May 12th. Later in the month, on May 24th, is their EOG pep rally to prepare for end of grade testing. It's also superhero day. And for Jarvisburg Elementary, Teacher Appreciation Week has been a roaring success for the teachers. This Saturday, May 6th, the Jaguars are going to throw their first annual spring fling from 10 to 1 p.m. On May 10th, their kindergarten teachers will host All Set For School. Lastly, make sure to come out and support the Jaguars on May 17th at 6:30 p.m. for the first and second grade musical. And with that, I'll pass it on to Tyler.
Good evening, everybody, tonight I'll be covering Moyak Elementary and Moyak Middle. From Moyak Middle, tomorrow, May 5th, is our field day sponsored by the PTA. Saturdays are spring fling from 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. On May 8th at 2:30 p.m., family afternoon reading events are from 2:30 to 4:30 in the library. On May 19th and 26th are our parent appreciation breakfast. We're looking forward to an awesome month for the Panthers. From Moyak Middle, early Chromebook renewal is taking place this week and next week. May 15th is the last day for early Chromebook renewal. On May 9th at 6:30 p.m. is our band concert. Sixth grade orientation school tours is on May 11th. Also on May 11th, several of our students will be participating in Special Olympics. The eighth grade students are looking forward to semi-formal dance on May 12th. EOG testing begins on May 25th and all library books are due on May 26th. Have a great month and a great summer.
Great, thank you. Speaking of time going by fast, next we have student board member recognition, Jacob Walton and Sydney Christian, would you come up front please? And would the rest of the board come up behind them? Like I said, it doesn't seem like two years.
It doesn't, no.
Gone by. And we'd like to recognize you for, uh, the schools and especially the Board of Education and like to present this plaque, it says, presented to Sydney Christians, student board number 2015 to 2017, in appreciation for proudly serving and representing the students of Curritah County Schools. Presented by the Curritah Board of Education, May 4th, 2017. And Curritah County is a beacon for excellence in education. Congratulations. Next, Jacob, this plaque is presented to Jacob Walton, student board member 2015 to 2017, in appreciation for proudly, proudly serving and representing the students of Curritah County Schools. Presented by the Curritah County Board of Education, May 4th, 2017. Congratulations.
Can we get you tighter so I can get everybody? Get you tight enough a little bit? Don't hide, you got it. That's good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, Sydney or Jacob, do you have anything you'd like to say about your experience as a student board member?
Definitely.
He's never the loss for words.
No, 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 never. Actually, maybe just not here. Um, so wow, thank you guys, not only for this opportunity to come and sit with you because like, sitting on this board, people are like, whoa, you're sitting with them? Like, whoa. It's really cool. It's cool to sit in on the work sessions and learn. I had no idea what the school board did before this and now, if somebody asks me, I could tell them anything probably. It's a really cool experience and I'm really glad I got to be a part of it. So thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
And I'd just also like to echo that and just say thank you so much for the experiences. You, when you just go to school, you never really see what goes on behind the scenes, so it's hard to really understand all the work and the heart and the effort that goes into it. And when you actually get back here and you go to the work sessions and the meetings and you get to see how it, how it's all run and what influences you to make the decisions you do, and it's just, it was just a fantastic experience and I'm personally interested in government, so it was a great experience going into college and hopefully pursuing a career in public service. So just thank you so much for the opportunities.
Thank you. Any of the other board members want to say anything?
I just wanted to say that as, as I was sitting here listening to you give your, um, information about the schools just now, I was looking over and I was like, wow, they've grown up so much. When you came, obviously you impressed us or you wouldn't be here, but it was very obvious how much that two years had just grown you to be just the way you are and we're, we're grateful for your expertise.
And we're very proud of, proud of all of you and you're just such a great example for our youth.
Yes.
You know, when, when people say, oh, the, the youth nowadays, so you know, look at all of y'all.
We know different.
Y'all are a perfect example of, of the type of student that Curritah County Schools, um, and y'all have done a wonderful job and like you say, you've learned all along the way as well in the last two years and we're happy to serve with you.
Jacob, you're going to Chapel Hill?
Yes, sir.
Sydney, what are you going to do?
I'm going to Arizona State.
Wow.
What is your dad gonna do?
Well, Starbucks is paying for it, so he's okay with it. Yeah, but. Starbucks, my job, yeah.
That's awesome.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, I, no debt for me.
Oh my gosh, that's terrific.
Well, that means he'll be able to travel to see you more because he's not having to pay for it.
That's wonderful.
Well, think about us in the wintertime.
Yeah, yeah, we might fly out there and see you.
Good luck, good luck to you and congratulations.
Thank you, it's meant a lot. And seeing how much you guys really do care, it's really, it helps me go to school because I know that there's, are people behind it that put their eyes into it.
They support you, love you.
Wish you all the best, both of you.
Really, really. Okay, uh, next item, approved field trip request, Superintendent Stefanic?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dobney and board members. Uh, we had some field trips, uh, or trips, I guess, I'm not sure, at the high school level, they call them field trips, but, um, Mr. Burgess stole some of my thunder. Uh, we've got, uh, all state competitions that are occurring, uh, this weekend, um, one all state choral festival in Raleigh and the all state band, uh, is in Greensboro. And then over the summer, uh, the yearbook, uh, group, I don't know how many years they've been going, but I approved this last year, uh, they go to yearbook conferences and it helps the students, uh, you know, with yearbook production and, uh, and helps, hopefully produce, uh, the best yearbook we can at, uh, the high school every year, so. Uh, it's nice that they get those learning experiences over the summer. It's nice that they get those learning experiences over the summer, and then they can take care of their school activities during the school year.
All right, thank you. Next, Public Comment Session, did anybody sign up?
No, they did not.
No, we didn't have anybody.
Okay. Next, Consent Agenda, do I have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Information Items, and the board needs to discuss this next. Our Work Session and Board of Ed Meeting, Thursday, July 29. Which is the...
You mean June 29.
Or June, excuse me. We need to have that for, to help Lori close out the finances for the year, and I'm pretty sure she would like that in the afternoon. Is there a time that you would like to meet that's better than another?
So, we're not having our June, the first month, the first?
No.
Okay.
Anytime is fine with me.
Anytime's fine with me.
It's 3 o'clock, okay? 3 o'clock line?
On the 29th?
Yes. Okay. So, our next Work Session Board Meeting will be, well, we won't have a Work Session. We don't have any items on the agenda, right?
Well, I think last year, there was a small Work Session at the beginning.
The general programs that will be approved.
Oh, okay.
We haven't gotten the budget yet, so we have nothing to present.
If we need it, we'll have the Work Sessions start at 3:00, and if not, we'll have the Board of Ed Meeting starting at 3:00.
Dr. Dobney, don't you typically have a closed session, then?
Unless something comes up, and we'll just...
Oh.
Oh.
Apparently, we do.
Isn't that when I come up?
Yeah, between now and June 29, we'll decide that.
We'll decide when it's gonna happen, okay.
But we'll schedule a separate Work Session for that.
Okay.
Okay, also, the Outstanding Educator and Retiree Reception will be May 15 at the Cooperative Extension Center at 5:30. And Student Board Members are invited to that, if you'd like to attend.
It's a fun event. It's a fun event at the Extension Office.
And...
Yeah, and it's a dinner, it's a dinner, and...
Okay, next, Board Members and Superintendent Comments, and you wanted to do recognition?
Yes. As I stopped upstairs between the Work Session and this meeting, there was a special letter on my desk that recognizes one of our administrators for community service, and I wanted to read it, because the Veterans of Foreign Wars asked that I read it in a way that would give recognition to this administrator, so I'd just like to read the letter from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, if the board's okay with that. This is a letter to Dr. Abram Davenport, we know him as Dav, at Currituck Middle School, Assistant Principal. "The Outer Banks Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 10950 will be eternally grateful to you and your family for providing such outstanding support of our recent dinner benefit and auction. By volunteering your great skills as a licensed auctioneer, you allowed our organization to exceed our goal established for this annual fundraising event. The assistance by your wife, daughter, and son made the administration of the auction flawless. The brief contacts we had during the planning phase were filled with sage advice and insights. The selection of which items to auction first, the use of bidding paddles, the readiness to work a fast-paced flow of items offered for bid, and the process for immediate delivery of items to successful bidders and subsequent payment were all excellent counsel and reflect your detailed knowledge of what is most effective in the conduct of an auction. We will follow your recommendations to create a video of VFW participation in veteran community events for display at next year's benefit. Just prior to the auction, when you had reviewed all of the 54 lots to be offered for auction and learned the retail value, you modestly stated, 'No guarantees, but I will do the best I can.' At that moment, you put on your hat, and everyone was mesmerized by your auctioneer pitch. The bids went flying, and the stack of items rapidly were sold, and I don't recall when you even took a breath. You made the auction lively and great fun for all. I know that your enthusiasm spread through the room and maximized our receipts. An analysis showed that 25% of the items sold at a premium to retail value, and 100% of the items exceeded cost, which is attributable to your auctioneering talents. By the way, this represents a 600% improvement over the raffle approach used in the previous year for essentially the identical items. We will never be able to thank you enough for your tremendous contribution to our organization. I know that being an auctioneer is separate from your daily job, but how wonderfully fortunate for the young people of Currituck County to have a leader, mentor, and Royal Medal as yourself influencing their learning and development. We are deeply indebted to you, and nobody understands better than veterans the significance of being thanked for their service. We salute you and commend you for your service to our community and look forward to working together in a symbiotic relationship. Gratefully, Clark Twitty, Commander, VF Post 0950."
That's pretty neat.
And this was written about?
He held, he was the auctioneer for a fundraiser. Dav Davenport at the middle school.
Dav, I went to that benefit.
Well, they said in a note up front, he goes, "Check with Karen Etheridge, she was there, she'll tell you how awesome he was."
He was awes, I was surprised. I mean, he was so professional as an auctioneer, and we were well-represented that night, because we also gave out athletic passes as one of the auctioned items.
Oh, nice.
So, our athletic director donated some passes as well, and then for Dr. Davenport to represent us, too. It was a great event, and well-attended, but just very organized.
Good.
Awesome.
And they said in the cover letter that they're starting this year, for the very first time, a high school scholarship program, and it doesn't say on here, this is the Outer Banks Veterans of Foreign Wars, so I don't know if the high schools are just down there, they're gonna be eligible for the scholarships, or it'll drift up this way as well. We'll have to watch and see for the ads for that scholarship program.
Great. Thank Davon, you know, on behalf of the board, and do you have anything else you want to say?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Geez, all right. Okay, Ms. Etheridge?
Okay.
Excuse me, I did have one thing, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I knew it.
I just wanted to say that Sidney and Jacob, thank you for your service. You guys will always be close, because your first two years on this board were my first two years, working with this board, so I'll remember you two guys as quality Student Board Members.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Sidney and Jacob, I want to repeat the same sentiments. Y'all have been a pleasure to work with, and I wish you the best in college and your future. Speaking of Student Board Members, Chelsea, she was here earlier. Chelsea Eves, I don't know if you remember Chelsea or not, she was one of our Student Board Members.
Oh, really?
And she sat where you're sitting tonight, and now she is one of our teachers at Jarvisburg Elementary. And so, you know, we're excited to have her back, and she's doing great things, too. With it being Education Week, we're proud of all the teachers in our schools, the students as well, but with two proms being last weekend, we had the NAP prom and then the high school prom, same night, unfortunately, but it was the same night. But behind the scenes, and what our teachers do to prepare for that, they don't get paid for that. They do that out of the love for the students, and they were down at the Hilton, and then they're at NAP, and preparing and getting everything ready for y'all, so y'all would have a wonderful evening. It doesn't go unnoticed, everything that they do for our kids and for our county. I just want to wish everybody a safe upcoming summer. It's gonna be here, I mean, I can't believe it's May already, and we've got, when you look at the calendar, Evet sends us an event calendar, and I mean, there's something every, every day that we're, you know, we can go to, choose to go to one versus another, but there's a lot of traffic now on the roads. I want everybody to be safe traveling the roads, and now with the new water park, we've got a lot of people looking over there at those slides, not paying attention, so just be really careful out on the roads, and just, I hope everybody has a great spring break, and I just appreciate everything that our teachers do for our county. Thank you.
I want to add into that about the prom. I know there were a lot of people involved with the preparation at JP NAP, and I don't have the number of staff members there, but with the prom being off-campus and on the Outer Banks for the high school, we had over 40 staff members volunteer to be down there as chaperones, parking lot attendants, anything that needed to be done, and Principal Doughty said that's the largest number that she can remember volunteering for an event, so that's a lot of people willing to give their time to make sure the students have a memorable experience.
Yes, this morning, I attended the Ministers Council for Currituck County, and I just want to say a big thank you to the churches in our community. This past month, they have all either contributed, they visited the schools, they provided lunches, goodies, et cetera. We appreciate all they do for the students, the teachers, and our schools. It hasn't gone unnoticed, and if your church is interested in joining them, then you can adopt a school and help out, and it would be great. I was the moderator for the Elementary Battle of the Books at Greggs Elementary earlier this month, and I just want to say congratulations to all the students who competed. They're amazing. They're fourth and fifth graders who've read 10 books and can just pull out just the most minute details, and they know the name of the book, I'm the author. Way to Go, Moyack Elementary School Panthers, they won first place, I was really proud of them. I attended Cinderella, Buddy White just did it up like he always does, and I also wanted to say thank you to the two of you. I said it earlier, you've just grown in leaps and bounds, and I'm excited about what you're gonna be doing throughout, and I don't want you to forget where Currituck is. Thank you.
Mr. Crowder?
Yep, I'd like to first ask that, in the future, maybe we could mention the Consent Agenda instead of just approving it all at once. I know we discussed in the Work Session, but it might be a thing or two that I want people to understand where I stand on in the future. So, with that being said, I also attended Cinderella with Mr. White. Another fantastic presentation, and I'm very pleased and proud. I'd also like to congratulate Sidney and Jacob on their move out of Currituck to their college endeavors, and I wish y'all luck. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Stepanik and his staff for the way that they handled the transportation issues in order to keep the school open the other day. We were challenged with very unusual weather conditions as a result of, I believe, a moon and wind. Anyhow, they had to readjust some busing to accommodate portions of the county, and they did that instead of just shutting school down or making schools start late, which puts an undue hardship sometimes, siding with caution, still puts a hardship on families trying to coordinate their days. So, I feel like they really rose to the task, and I really appreciate it, and I thank you. And God bless Currituck County.
Let's roll.
Well, I'd just like to thank all of our educators for working so hard. I certainly appreciate all of you. I had the chance this month to attend Battle of the Books, and it was wonderful. I was very proud of our students. I also went to Cinderella, and again, another wonderful production. I went down to our Rural Center and saw our Ag students as they did Ag Day for our third graders, and I was just amazed at what our Ag teachers and our Ag students do, and the leadership roles that those kids, you know, just amazes me. I traveled with the softball teams to Greenfield for the Easter Tournament and was very proud of our girls there. I'm proud of all our schools, keep up the hard work, students, staff, everybody.
Okay, I, too, attended Ag Day, and that's always a fun, exciting event just to watch, you know, the third graders and how excited they get about, you know, all the animals and that that they see, and all the things they get to do. Earlier today, the board conducted Student Board Member interviews, and hopefully by, what, Monday or Tuesday, we might be able to give those names, but I didn't want to give them tonight, because I'm not sure everybody got the notification of who got it and who did not, so. And I, too, would like to thank, you know, Sidney and Jacob. I know where Chapel Hill is. Is it Tucson?
Tempe.
What, Tempe?
Watson.
Okay. Well, now I know where that is, okay. Also, from one of our teacher assistants, I got a senatorial statement that recognized teacher assistants, and this was read in the Senate of North Carolina, and it goes, "Whereas teacher assistants provide invaluable aid to teachers and students in the classrooms throughout North Carolina's public schools, and whereas teacher assistants perform various duties, such as reinforcing lessons, grading assignments, monitoring classrooms, and tutoring individual students, and whereas teacher assistants are able to obtain support and find continuing professional development opportunities through the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistance, which is celebrating its 35th conference this year, now therefore all teacher assistants deserve to be recognized for their contributions and service to teachers and students. In witness whereof, the undersigned certifies that the foregoing statement was read in the Senate and placed in the Journal on the 27th day of April 2017, and was submitted by Senator Mike Woodard." So, once again, I'd like to congratulate all teacher assistants, too. And last thing tomorrow is Cinco de Mayo. Don't want anybody to forget that, so. Anyway, with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I motion, we adjourn.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Cinco de Mayo.